I'd like to call the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance today and look forward to having a very productive meeting. We will start off with the great Warren Harris, and he was looking for it. Who that is? Warren, it's good to have you here. You're going to talk to us about the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have an item on your agenda today that I thought it would be worth giving you a little bit of background and some information that we've been going through over the last, quite frankly, for the last several years. It is in regard to the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, HARETTA as we commonly refer to them. We, and just to give you a bit of background, you know, economic organizations over the years have had to begin to think about reshaping their mission, refocusing on the current conditions in the marketplace, and, you know, quite frankly, we've done that. The organization that I arrived in here in '07 is much different today because of more of a strategic approach to doing the business of economic development, specifically required by council and your vision. What we've saw, though unfortunately, over the past several years is that there's been a lack of ability by the alliance to make some of the same important changes in terms of how you conduct and do business, and has led to a level of frustration, quite frankly, among not only the public sector investors, which are the communities, but also the private sector investors as well. We have expressed and have taken somewhat of a leadership role in terms of representing the public sector and sharing concerns about their performance and outcomes, and over the past several years have been very direct with them about that. Several years ago, we approached the leadership and said, for example, here in the city of Virginia Beach, and quite frankly, some other communities joined us in this meeting, that, you know, we're looking for a different type of prospect outcome. You know, we're changing from casting the large net and accepting any and everything that comes within that net to be something more laser-focused and laser in terms of strategic outcomes. We were looking for value-added opportunities, and in case of Virginia Beach, you know, it really translates into knowing that we're moving into much more of an urban environment, that we were looking for them to produce a much better results in providing prospects that fit that profile, you know, office users, you know, tech companies, companies that, you know, looking for absorption of office space versus looking for large land development opportunities like, you know, warehouse and distribution, although that's a component part that fits some of the other communities in the region, certainly didn't fit, you know, where Virginia Beach and, quite frankly, some of the other communities were heading. And so as we asked the alliance to reconsider, or at least add a more strategic approach to their agenda, we still saw very limited success and then add effort. So we elevated our concern. We actually then took our concern to the chairman of their board and also, again, you know, relayed upon to him about the lack of their ability to make some course corrections and to begin to address what we thought and see as more of a current trend in the economic development world. Ultimately, that led to last year, the city manager recommending that we split and hold back a portion of our funding to the alliance, which we did in this current fiscal year. Needless to say, that certainly got their attention. As you all well know, being that the funding for the alliance specifically on the public sector side is based on your per capita population, and at 95 cents per, you know, at 95 cents per 424,000 people at the time, you know, that's a significant amount of revenue to their operation. We had then a series of meetings with the chairman, the manager, and the deputy city manager participated in this past summer and shared with him up front about the lack of outcomes that we saw and the frustration that we had with, at that point now, the leadership that currently exists within the alliance. True to Virginia Beach style, though, we did not only just come with the complaint, we offered a solution. We suggested that the larger communities come together in a subcommittee, City of Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Newport News, and Chesapeake, the largest contributors to that organization. We started a series of subcommittee meetings in which the managers or the deputy city managers, along with the chief or the directors of their economic development programs, we began to meet over a series of meetings this past summer and fall. It culminated in a meeting that was then a joint meeting whereby all of the localities and that are investors, the public localities, met with the executive committee of the alliance. This was on December 1st, which we outlined specific details as to what we would like to see in a much more productive, much more value-added organization that we felt the alliance should be to and for this community. I have to say, the recommendations were well received. The executive committee did not deny or run from the conversation. They actually said this was certainly refreshing for them, and to them, it was a much-needed conversation that clearly should have happened, you know, months if not years ago. At the conclusion of that meeting, back on December 4th, December 1st, the chairman executed one of the requirements that we had as a part of the condition we would see a need to have for us to consider any thought of going forward, and that is to make a course correction with their leadership and made the decision that the current leadership at the alliance had to be terminated. With that, we also asked and required that a complete, and we're calling, the word that we're using is "reset," had to occur for us to get very comfortable with the direction that the alliance was going and how, as a public sector body, we can come to you as our, you know, elected leaders with something that you felt extremely comfortable with in terms of any kind of future recommendation as to the role of a regional organization, you know, like the alliance. They have embraced that requirement. They have pulled together a subcommittee made up of representatives of their executive committee. I've been asked to also serve on that committee to begin to outline what the new mission, what this new reset of the organization should look like, what are some of the component areas that are important to the return on the investment that we're all looking for, not only on the public sector side, but quite frankly, from the private sector as well. Our first meeting is scheduled for Thursday at 2:00. We'll begin to do that. In the interim, we had indicated to them that if they were to take upon this requirement, quite frankly, from the standpoint of the beach, and I have to say subsequently from the other localities, that this reset was needed and necessary for us to continue any kind of support for this organization. Once they took that effort on, we would, at that point, feel comfortable in recommending to our council to consider fulfilling at least the balance of this year of our funding requirement to the alliance. So the item on your agenda tonight is to consider that action as well as what we had done in the interim, if the decision by council not to continue funding the alliance. The balance of that funding was set aside for us to begin to look at the potential of setting up an incubator in our office space, adjacent to our office there and the new office space that we have. We have been approached, as you see that in your background information, by Tywhor Community College. They are very much interested in relocating their workforce solutions department from where it is today in Suffolk and locating and having that operations adjacent to us in that space. They are willing, and we've structured a payment requirement. This is not a full gift. It is subsidized, but it's not a gift. They will be paying us rent. They would be a sub-tenant to the city for that space for a minimum of three years with two one-year options. So we do get a potential bill payer, if you will, that will set up shop and operate in that space that we were holding aside for potential establishment of the incubator. But the primary piece in that action that you have today is to reconsider the balance of our obligation, or at least our consideration for this year's funding for the alliance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Jim Wood.
Yeah, thanks. Warren, I was, there was a article in the Inside Business on Monday, and I just pulled it up, and there was a couple of things in there, and I'll couch this by saying that I'm not a fan of the alliance as the way it's currently organized or the way it's currently run. They've certainly made good faith effort, in my opinion, based on what you've said with respect to at least starting to move forward. But some of the troublesome things in this article, and tell me if I'm right or not, where Norfolk said reevaluation of full support on their half will take place after confirmation of return on investment. That's a quote from Norfolk, and then there's a quote from the HREDA chairman saying, "We may stay with the current mission." And that's kind of completely opposite from what you just said.
Well, I can't speak to the Norfolk piece. I can say specifically to what the chairman has indicated to us is that all bets are off. They're not going to continue down the current path. They realize that that is an obsolete model that doesn't work. It's not effective. And so, you know, comments that he's made to us in our meetings and with other localities is that they understand that a strategic shift needs to happen, and that's why they're calling it a complete reset. It's a complete, you know, review.
That to me as well.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know how that, translating that quote in an article, but I can only say to me personally, you know, it is not going to be the same organization as we've had in the past.
Well, the other thing that says, which basically mirrors what you said, is concerns were shared by multiple area economic development offices, so it sounds like it's, the entire region is saying that this thing needs to be rebuilt. You know, with the good faith effort, you know, I personally don't have an issue with supporting at least paying this balance part. My concern is going forward, and, you know, I want to make sure that we don't have anything plugged into our budget at all until we know what they're going to do. And now, they're saying in here, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I heard you say March, or maybe it was in here. I mean, are they going to have a new plan in place in March that's acceptable to the city of Virginia Beach and frankly, the other cities?
Sure.
Because, you know, one of the other telling things in here is a quote from you saying, "The alliance hasn't delivered us a project in at least five years," and probably longer than that.
Yeah, that's probably being generous. I won't speak to the budget side of the House. I'll let that be the manager. But I can say that I would advise the council to give this reset a chance to determine whether or not it is an organization worthy of our continuance. And I can tell you, if you're not happy with that reset, I think it's telling, because I would say other communities would follow suit. And, you know, I think, you know, quite frankly, as a functional organization, there is a need for a regional organization like the alliance. From a structural standpoint, the state, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, when there are projects that are suitable for our region, they're not going to take the time to individually contact each locality and say, "Are you interested?" They're going to want to contact a regional entity that will disperse that. So we just need to be careful that, I'm not advocating obviously the alliance, but at some point, there needs to be some regional organization that can capture some of that regional information that comes to us that's going to be required by some of the agencies that we have interface with, like the partnership, like some of the site location consultants and the like. But I would, no doubt, I hear what you're saying, I think it's appropriate for the council, certainly before they make a FY16 commitment, to fully understand what this new organization looks like.
So do you think then we would have that information before we would have to make FY16?
I would make that a stipulation and requirement. I mean, you know, we're going to meet on Thursday. The chairman, Bob Boy, feels as though they can have at least some new direction completed by March, maybe a little aggressive, but certainly by July 1, we should know if in fact this organization is something that, as a body, we would want to consider supporting.
And then the funding scheme, is that possible?
I think that's on the table. I think, you know, we have some ideas on a different funding model, quite frankly, that's a little bit more equitable, if I can say. But, you know, we'll certainly offer that as well.
We've got a couple more questions, Lewis and Rosemary. John, you want to?
I guess I'm a little confused here, Warren. The ordinance appropriates or the money, accepts, appropriates and transfers the money from economic development to the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance. Are you saying you're going to hold that money?
No, this is current money of this year's fiscal year. So that's money that's already been appropriated by council. We've just held it in economic development to wait and see what direction was going to come out of our concerns regarding the alliance. So we're just asking your concurrence to allow us to release that existing funding that's already been appropriated to the funding that's been appropriated for alliance to make our full commitment for FY1415.
So you want to fulfill the commitment for the year?
For this fiscal year, yes, sir.
Rosemary?
And hold next year. Next year, we're saying until I can, in good confidence, share with you what this new structure looks like, that you consider holding FY16 until that work has been completed.
Well, I just have a comment. I've been, you know, I've been very unhappy with their performance over the years, and I don't think they've done anything to help Virginia Beach that I can think of over the last four or five years.
More than that.
You know, I guess, I'm assuming that you are, you're going to give them the $212,000 and, you know...
Take advantage of the work program that's already in place, where we have the ability to still attend on trips that they have set up and be engaged with them in any kind of prospect activity. But after July 1, state that before you consider funding for that next fiscal year, that we come back to you with what that new program looks like before you make that commitment going forward.
Rosemary?
I gotta say, it's been longer than five years. I mean, we've been having dissatisfaction for at least 2002.
Yeah.
You know, and if you figure $450,000 for millions and millions that we have given to this entity, and I'm not sure what we have to show for it. I mean, you say the last five years. I'm not even sure what we have in the last 10, 12 years to show.
Well, again, believe me, I'm not defending them, so...
No, I'm not defending, but, I mean, here's the topic, and this is our opportunity to say, this is what some of our heartburn is. And our heartburn is that we have given this organization millions over time, and I don't know what we've, you say five years, it may be, I'd really like to know.
Well, we can give you that data. I think what you have, again, the alliance, again, is a marketing organization. They would tell you, again, I'm not defending them, I just want to let you know, like you said, this is a conversation, that they only can market the region. They cannot close a deal. They cannot offer incentives. They would say that the economy has not been at its best these last several years, and so it's been a challenging environment. That's no excuse, and I'm not giving them excuses, and I'm not giving them the pass, because even during that period, we've done quite well, quite frankly. So I can understand your frustration, and I think that's why it's culminated to this point where we are, that it was, time was up. You know, we've given them a pass long enough, and we just said, "Time is up. You're going to have to face the music." We led the charge, and, you know, it's not now only Virginia Beach. It's a regional concern among all localities and private sector investors. You know, their funding is set up by way of not only a per capita on the public side, but they also ask private sector investors to invest too, and they have not seen, I would say, in large measure, a return on their investment either. So...
John Moss.
I'm sorry. I mean, no one here has a crystal ball, but you've been working with this for a long time, and you're in the trenches, and you're our expert. I mean, what are we, we're going to spend another $200 million?
$20,000.
Where do you see that we're going to get from that? Where do you think this thing is going? I mean, is this kind of a...
$200,000.
Did I say what I said?
Two million.
$200,000.
I know what you said.
I've got millions on my mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've got millions on my mind.
No, no, I understand.
But we have spent a lot of money.
Sure, sure.
Another $200,000, what's this going to buy for us?
Right.
We could get something really good for $200,000. I mean, is this just sort of throwing good money in after bad? And I mean, are we, I mean, how do we know?
Well, I would like not to think so. Again, I don't have that crystal ball, as you mentioned. I do say, though, we have their attention, and we have a unique opportunity to correct the course that they've been under, and we have the ability to specifically influence not only their mission, but how we measure their outcomes. And so if the outcomes going forward is no longer, hey, just market the region and bring us prospects that we don't, can't even have a chance or have an interest in, we can say, that's, you know, pay for performance, or there are a lot of things that we can, you know, plug into this reset that, you know, we couldn't, you know, in the current situation. So I think it's all on the table, Ms. Wilson, and your point is accurate, and I think we don't hold back in terms of what kinds of expectations and what kind of measurements we're going to look for if we're going to consider being a part of this going forward.
It's a little disappointing that it's taken getting to this point to actually get their attention. This has been going on for a very long time.
John Moss and Lewis again.
Well, a procedural question. We adopted the budget last year of an appropriation. I think it shows in the CAFRA report that these are block grants to these organizations. So in the course of that appropriation process, and I'm just asking, did council authorize someone to withhold an appropriation that we made? Because I'm wondering, were we really saying we don't want to pay them versus voting to pay them? Because if we've appropriated the money, if that's true, and that's how the ordinance, I do believe, reads, then council's action is to, what? It's not like the council action would be not to pay versus to pay. I'm trying to understand what do the...
You're actually going to redirect resources from the incubator to this.
You broke the contribution in half. You broke it into two pieces, one for HARETTA and one for the incubator, and we were to deliver the message that we were not happy. We've done that. We've come up with the way forward, and now what we're saying is, based on what we've seen, we're suggesting that council, in effect, tweak your priorities and give the regional effort another chance, at least through the end of June, and instead of doing the incubator in that space in town center that we enter into an agreement with TCC, which we think will be very advantageous, but that's a separate issue.
So we're decrementing the money for incubator, right? Making adjustment in our line item budget for this year?
Transferring that to HARETTA.
And then making another appropriation to spend that money.
And the way we do those, we pay those quarterly, so we'll see how it goes.
By invoice. It's not, they send us an invoice, so we have...
Next meeting, if we're not making some progress, we can still withhold that last quarter payment.
Okay, good. Now, getting back to the coming back, I think would be nice to get not just what their business model is going forward, but why they believe that business model will work, and what are the metrics by which, like everything, you know, like a new CEO takes over, here's my 100-day plan.
Yeah, right.
I think I'd like to know what that next 100 days specifically is going to be and how they plan to measure their performance. I personally think this is something the private sector should do, number one. I don't think this is our role of government. That's my first view, so I'm not really enthused about why we're doing this as a whole for a lot of these groups. And when there's no track record to show for it, it's a lot of tax relief over 10 years or a lot of something else over 10 years. And so what makes this thing, you know, the past is always the best predictor of the future. That's a general saying, not always true, but a good one. So how is, I know they're trying to go out and get a new director, trying to get, but in the end, you know, how are they assessing the marketplace in which they're going to operate? Because that's how their model has to align.
Well, you ask very good questions, and that's on the tape. I've written those notes down, and that's going to be in the conversation starting Thursday. I think it's perfectly...
Look at the marketplace, the growth is all in small businesses, right? The hardest thing to get a loan for is a small business. How are most people raising money in the private business? In the bond market. They're not raising their money from banks. They're out in the bond market raising their money. That's a global issue, not just Virginia Beach. So you've got to be looking at how you're assessing that financial market and how is this recruiting thing you're looking at reflecting the reality of world capital markets. And I think there has to be more than just a business model. There has to be an underlying explanation of how they see the international marketplace and the flow of capital that will make that work. That makes it more conviction that they understand the problem they're trying to solve.
Lewis?
Back to the $212,000. We, are we the only community that's going to continue this funding, or are they...
All the communities have fulfilled their obligations with the exception of Norfolk and Virginia Beach.
And what's Norfolk doing?
I would be not in a position to speak for them, to be honest with you. I have the, in our meetings, what they've shared with us is that they are going to fulfill their balance of their requirements, but...
I'm going to interject if I may, Warren. First of all, I want to thank Warren for his leadership here, and this is Warren making this recommendation.
It's in that criticism.
Oh, no, no, I didn't take that way at all, but I want, before I start out on what I'm going to say, I want to thank Warren for his leadership here. He's been in a very difficult situation in which he has seen his department and his council be dissatisfied with the operation of a regional economic development alliance. In talking with us and also reaching out to Mayor Fring, we played hardball, and we made it clear we were not satisfied and the funds were being withheld. I think you have seen, and it's very difficult when someone loses their job and so forth, folks, these things have occurred in recent months, and I think it is the right thing because I think the mission of the, when it was put together, John, I'm sure it was the primo way to do something a number of years ago. But it's not the way to go today, and I think Warren has made that quite clear. And let me just say to you, once Norfolk and Virginia Beach held back, I was at the governor's for dinner with some other mayors from our area, and they all got right there behind us, which was very, very encouraging. So this isn't just Norfolk and Virginia Beach on its own, this is with the other mayor stepping up, saying, you know, "We haven't gotten anything either." All that being said at that same dinner, the heck, what's the name of the Virginia Economic Partnership?
Partnership, yeah.
And this is not a governor's appointment position. This is one that's appointed by, who makes that appointment?
Private board, yeah.
It's a private board that's, you know, been huge as far as trying to really do some major economic development within the Commonwealth. And they said, "Folks, redesign what you've got, but we need something as a region to work with." And that came from the chairman of that. And again, it's not an appointment by the governor, it's by a private group. And I would just sit back and say to you, I think that Warren has the pulse of this organization right now and the right direction to go, and that we follow his lead. And I know for a fact that Warren and Mr. Spoor, if it's not going the right way, are going to come back and tell us, "We give up."
Yeah.
And if that's the case, we give up, and we put that money into our own economic development department and see what we can do. I hope that won't be the case.
And selfishly, I could say, "That'd be great," but I don't know if it's the right thing either. At least not yet.
And I don't know, but that's kind of in a nutshell. Amelia, then Shannon.
If I just wanted again to say, I was pleased to hear that you will be on that subcommittee.
Right.
Because there's the direct, you know, connection.
Sure.
And you have done well with economic development to bring that team together to turn this around. And the other thing I wanted to ask, I noticed you mentioned about the incubator. If it goes the direction where it's TCC renting the space, what happens to the idea of having an incubator like they had in Norfolk for young entrepreneurs?
Sure.
Because they have that there, we don't have it, that was put on the table.
Right.
And I'm hearing...
No, it stays a component part of our program. I mean, this was an alternative. There's some other choices.
Okay.
Quite frankly, there's a choice there on Tywhor Community College campus, and so there's some other options. We just wanted to make sure that if there was going to be an option and the city could play a role in that, that we provided one. But it does not eliminate the importance of us working more diligently with the small entrepreneur, because that's, I think it was said, that's where a lot of action is in the marketplace today, so...
Okay, thank you.
Shannon, then we'll wrap it up.
If my memory serves me well, we voted to cut their funding in half, but they voted to accept it as full payment for six months. Is that correct?
Correct.
What I'm getting at is, what's the harm in us not funding the next six months, waiting till July, and then funding them fully? But then that gives us the ability to see that they're actually going to do what they say they're going to do and see that they have their path on the right track before we do it. we just dish out another $212,000. I mean, in the sake of regionalism, I understand why we want to do it and why we want to create this, but if we have given away millions of dollars, as everyone has said, what six months?
I think it dissolves their ability to function, quite frankly. I mean, they're still an organization that is trying to market Hampton Roads. There are existing opportunities, trips and events that we are scheduled to participate in. It eliminates then our ability to take advantage of those trips and those events. I think it, again, instead of decimating the organization and to render it useless, there is still a redeeming function there that still provides value, whether it's been productive or not, granted. I think we certainly call that the question. But, you know, you've got to stay in the game. You just can't take all your marbles away and... Or take your ball away and not, you know, still put an effort, you know, to make something happen. I mean, in our world of economic development, we don't work with just one prospect and hope that that prospect comes through. I mean, it's the funnel of 100 and hoping that ones and twos fall out of that funnel. And that's just another resource to our ability to capture an opportunity. And again, that's not me trying to defend them. It's just an observation to your good observation, yeah.
And also just how the process of working with them over the next six months as well will shape...
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have another thought.
Sure, go right ahead.
I'm going to vote for this. But I want to tell you, the only reason I'm voting for it is because of you.
I agree.
No pressure there, Warren.
No pressure at all. No doubt. I got you. And I got to support these guys up here on the team too, so, you know, that's important. It is a team effort.
That's a compliment to you.
Well, I appreciate that.
But, you know, and let me say to you folks, they know how I feel about this too, and I back Warren 120%.
Yeah, we've not crossed words at all. They know exactly how we feel and where we stand on this situation.
And I'll agree with Louis. I mean, it's literally the only reason I would support this is because of the work that you've done on this and the fact that we could get, at least have a seat at the table to get this restructured. You know, the concern, I mean, I know, talking about the millions of dollars and everything, but part of it's kind of short-sighted when we start talking about state economic development aid coming down that's going to have to go through a regional organization, as so many of these things have to go through regional organizations. I'm not saying this is the right regional organization.
No doubt.
But there's several things that you've said that make... That give me comfort. One is, let's not do anything in FY16 until we know what their plan is. I think that gives them a good deadline.
Yep.
And I also think the fact that you're a part of this group, I think that's very important. So, I mean, that's why I'm supporting it. But other than that, you know, I came in here completely opposed.
I understand. Yeah, I hear you. Right.
You feel the pressure?
Every day. What's new?
Warren, we thank you so very much.
All right, good enough. Thank you all.
Now, folks, you're not going to believe this. We're going to have the interim financial statements presented by Dave Hanson.
Wow.
Now, I tell you, I want to see how he comes across this way. I mean, this is going to be something to see.
I have full confidence in him as well.
We all do.
Hi, I'm Patty.
Yeah, you are.
Patty's on leave, and Don Barnett, our controller, is out of the building, so you got me. And so I've been studying all day to do this. Anyway, this is your six-month financial, interim financial review. And I have to turn on the clicker. So you can see that we have expended, if you were to do percentages, about 51.6%. That's the second line. And the top line is we've received about 42% of our revenues. You can see the state line is lagging. That's fairly, fairly normal because our Personal Property Tax Recovery Act, we don't get but about $6.5 million of our $53 million in our... Recover that until July and August. And for our newest council member, that's after our fiscal year closes, so we're very much in arrears. That's why we maintain a very strong financial reserve in the city. We pay for a lot of the things that run the city, and we wait in arrears to receive our second installment of real estate, our state taxes, our sales tax, our B-Pole. They all come in in the latter half of our fiscal year, or even after the close of the fiscal year. We don't close the books till somewhere in that September, October timeframe, and we issue the CAFRA report in the November timeframe. We use glide path analysis to kind of give you a visual on how we're doing. We use a two-year average. And in revenues, you want that line to be above the two-year glide path. And in this case, we are about $19.3 million more dollars than we were this time last You can see that we still have $57.7 to collect, but we're still on a above-the-trend line, which is good. There are many of our taxes lag, even though we're saying we're giving you a six-month report. Telecom and franchise taxes are two months behind. Sales and utility are one month behind. But our restaurant and our hotel are up to date, and the reporting through the locals is very quick. So let's take a look at some of these specific taxes. Real estate, we collected $248.7 million in our first installment, of which $229 goes to the general fund. There are certain dedications of real estate that go to various other categories. But the good thing is, our accounts receivable property taxes were up 3.1%, and that's generally because our real estate assessments are up 3.6%, so.
One, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still about at the real estate revenue that we had in 2009.
You are correctly reading that chart. Moving on to personal property taxes, the reason why this is really not percentage-wise at a 50% of the collections, and that's mainly because we don't collect the majority of this until the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. And the increase, I was trying to understand, why would we add more to the budgeted amount? You'll recall, you added 30 cents additional to the personal property tax, taking it to $4, and that was to support some public safety dedicated initiatives associated with it. So we expect to catch up, and that next, the large personal property tax levy occurs on 5 June. General sales tax, general sales tax, as I said, is a two-month lag, but they are up about 1.3% year-to-date than we were this time a year ago. Utility taxes, electric, water, gas, all based on a rate structure, remains flat. Telecommunications tax continues its downward spiral. This is just our citizens' transferal from using landlines to being pure cellphone users to support their residences. Huge amount of taxes lost when you don't have the landline collections. Hotel room tax, this is just the general fund portion, and hotel room taxes are up 3.3% from this time a year ago. And if you want to see the full hotel tax from all funds, you can see that these are up considerably as well on a year-to-year basis. A distribution of hotel taxes are shown on this. The percentages of the total budget and the amounts of what the total budget of $27.2 and how it'd be distributed is shown on this. Tip the tap in general fund, and then a dash down to Sandbridge. Restaurant taxes, general fund portion only. Larger percentage of that tax does go to the general fund than does in hotels. And restaurant meal taxes are up for FY15 by 3.9%. And then when we add all the funds, you can see it's almost pushing... We have a budget amount of $59.6, almost $60 million. And that is distributed as such, and a much larger portion going to the general fund. And open space is the purple part that is shown there as OS. So a summary of our first six months, general fund revenues. Our analysis on staff is we're comfortable where we are and do not feel we need to make any operational adjustments at this time. Transferring our attention to expenditures in reverse, you want your current year of execution blue line to be below the two-year trend line on this one. That puts you in a good operating posture there. And it reflects 51.6% of the budget, and I'll give you an idea of why that's happening on the next chart. Kind of looked at that and said, well, if I was at 50% of the year, I'd want to be close to 50% of my expenditures. But if you look at that third line, operating expenses, you can see that's a heavy upfront expenditure. We'll make capital expenditures and bulk material purchases in the first half of the year to get those online, vehicles, other major capital expenditures, and we'll have to commit those funds early on to do that. But the majority of these are lagging a little bit than the 50%, which in the expenditure category is really good. And so I wrap this up by saying Patty will be back. And we'll catch up on some of those lagging sales. You'll see Christmas sales start to show up in the next month. But subject to your questions, that is all I have.
I just want to thank you for doing a mighty fine job there, sir.
I will report back to Patty.
My point of observation, I don't have the slide number or the printout, but it's the one on general fund expenditures by type. And if you will notice, we're at the six-month point. If you double the salaries and double the fringe benefits, we are under-executing payable on annualized basis by $15 million.
All right.
And we've been very fortunate that we haven't had a major overtime expenditure hurricane. We've, knock on wood, I hate to bring that up, but, you know, we've been holding check with our standardized overtime requirements supporting special events. That seems to be where we're at right now.
I'm sorry you brought that to our attention, though, because Ms. Henley's going to be on that like a duck on a jukebox.
Well, my only point for bringing it up, because I'll be bringing it up again at the budget time, this represents overtaxation of our citizens. Because in the end, we end up spending it on stuff, and we never justify it in the budget process for that purpose.
That's not fair, because we do take that money to help balance the next budget if it isn't used. The fair is...
Sometimes. What I'm saying is...
Sometimes we've done it for how many years now?
The best practice in industry and in the cities in our community and even the school board is to fund and to budget at about 98% of actual full because of lapse... We funded 100%, and basically, we under-execute historically 4% to 5%. I've done the numbers. And it does represent, and it's not a best practice.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
The rating agencies don't agree with you, John, and they give us points for that and that extra cushion.
I'm sure all those families out there would like to have the rating that we have because we tax them too much.
You get a one-year savings, and then you're back to taxing them.
Hey, sure money. You like to save?
Okay. Did you have something, Lewis?
No.
Okay. All right, folks. We will now go to city council liaison reports. The great Bobby Dyer.
Just an update on the Process Improvement Task Force, our Subcommittee on Small Business. We put together a survey that was done in conjunction with Old Dominion University, getting ready to go out. And what we're looking, really targeting, that the majority of businesses in this country are 30 people or less, and those are the people that we're going to really try to focus on, get some information, and, once again, move forward and create the process to really make this business-friendly.
I want to personally thank you for what you're doing there. I'm hearing good things about the process that you've established, though. On behalf of the entire council, thank you for your hard work.
No, thank you. Thank council for trusting us.
Any other liaison reports? Barbara Henley.
The outdoor plan, of course, is being updated this year, and they had the first or one of the workshops this past week with the Open Space Committee, and there will be another one in March. And I hope you all had the opportunity to look through that Open Space Annual Report that we got in our packet and look at the, you know, the things that have been achieved with that 0.44% of the restaurant tax that we just saw in the purple. It's really, I think, one of our most exciting programs.
It is that. Other liaisons? Now we'll go to comments.
I want to go back to the discussion that we had, I think it was last Tuesday, on senior citizen tax issues. I think that's something we need to address, how we need to... There's obviously some change needs to be made, but I think we need to adopt the change and then give people a year notice that we're changing versus changing as part of the budget process. And then people have very little time to react between their own cash flow and stuff. We've got to take a look, make a change, and I'm open to some... We don't room for some real change, but I think people ought to be given a notice so they have time to adapt their own personal cash flow and stuff to adjust to the change that we make. That would be one suggestion that I would offer up. I would like to thank Dave for all his hard work he's been doing with CTAC on that road. I don't think he's... That is, no good deed goes unpunished, but it's appreciated.
Last night, they made an approved forwarding the letter to VDOT, finally.
Nice, John.
So it was an interesting meeting.
That's been a Herculean effort, and it is appreciated greatly.
Thank you.
One of the things I also wanted to share, because it's out, this is the Congressional Budget Office. This is their analysis of the five-year of all the fiscal from highways, you name the programs. But what's, I think, most important for us as we look forward is their projection over the next five years of what they see as the annual increase in defined benefit pensions that the government pays in Social Security. It's 2% or less, so I think we need to be looking at demographically our ability, as you mentioned before, mayor, about people's ability to afford things. There's a huge issue with transportation. As you know, the transit bill has to be reauthorized this year. They got a short-term extension. That's an issue in here. And basically, they're basically showing about a 1.5% to 2% real growth in defense spending. That's the biggest part of our economy, but it's mostly going to procurement, not to compensation, which was a big fuel of our growth right in the early parts. So I think that's also something we'll have to take into consideration. We will not see the growth in personal income driven by defense expenditures that we saw in the last 10 years and the five years going forward, and that will certainly weigh in to our budget process.
What was that percentage in dollars?
For defense? Defense was $51 billion of OTO, and it was like $86 billion of the Kantoa over the FY15 baseline. That's pretty close.
A lot of money.
But most of it is for procurement, as you can well imagine. But good things for a region when you look at things. It's also things ship repair, ship maintenance, so that's good for our vendors. But in terms of compensation, it was 1.3% in '16, 1% this year, so much, much smaller growth on that large sizable payroll that goes into the region, so that's a factor. I've been getting a lot of emails, I'm sure you have been too, on compensation and overtime and all those things. I've shared with the mayor some of my responses back to people with this manager as well. But if you go look at the five-year forecast, I think it's on page 65 or 63, there was a composite chart that showed that over the... Since 2005, there's been about 24.7% increases in salary attributed to mayor. You know, you named me the reason, but compensation increases. The private sector is less than that, about 7% less. You look Dr. Cook's report, on average, that's because this region's about 92% of the national average private sector wage index. That's not surprising that that's true. The military sector is a whole nother scheme. That was upwards of 30%, and the federal sector was 24.9. So I'm cheering those because it's... People think that somehow that they're disadvantaged. It's just that everybody's disadvantaged by the economy. It's not one group, and it's not like we have the capacity. But I think that would be important, maybe in one of these things, to kind of just show that, you know, Ms. Lewis' company, and I mean it in a funny way, but the point is, everyone is suffering under this economy, and it isn't like they're being singled out or we have lots of money and we're not using it in a good way to reward our employees. Just the capacity is not in the community to raise that kind of money. And I just don't know that... And I share that frank candidness with people when they call. call. The last point I want to make, this is in reference to something from the city manager. I know they had a testimony on red light referendum, and I think it's, red lights work, the data is true, and I applaud the people that went and spoke. But I don't think we should ever be glad or enlightened or think it's a great achievement when people are denied the opportunity to go to the ballot box and overrule something they don't agree with. Now, I know this council's never taken a position on referendum. We've taken a position on supporting red light cameras, because they do do about public safety. But that issue wasn't about red light cameras. It was about the public's ability to say they're willing to take the risk that goes with not having them. And we worked against them having that right. I don't think that's our role. We work for the people, and they have the right to express their view and overturn our decisions when they don't like them. So I'm just expressing, I'm not concurring with that. And there are a couple bills before the General Assembly that are going to cost us money. One is expanding tax exemptions, you probably have seen that, for now the spouses of firefighters, law enforcement. So I'm just telling you that all these things, tax exemptions sound great, but in the end, someone has to make up for them. And I know we haven't taken a position on that, and I know it sounds like, you know, be awful to say no on things, but some of these things really need to, just like our senior citizens program, some of these things need a little bit of second thought.
Actually, VML's taking it.
I know they have, and that's why...
Because if they're going to give somebody's money, why give away their money, not our money?
Right. And I think that's, you know, put accountability as well. I just mentioned that people hadn't followed that. That is, you know, these things are starting to add up to big money, not just little money, big money.
They're constantly giving away somebody else's money, which...
And I do recall that we were thinking about one time, and I know we haven't come back, this is the thing that the university's doing analysis of, you know, the long-term ranging out of really what's the lifecycle tax benefit of some of these tips and whatnot. We were going to be looking at the graduate schools, at ODU, at the Darden School, and I know Mr. Spoor, you were looking at that. That's been about a year now, and maybe at the retreat, we could get a report on what's our way forward on making that happen, so we can really make an objective business case of what's going on there. That's my last comment.
Thank you, John. All the comments, Amelia?
I just have three short ones. Rosemary and I attended the VML, and that went very well, and she's just mentioned about the tax exempt. The other thing was the Operation Blessing that I want to thank Warren and his staff.
Operation Smile.
Again, they had a whole Operation Smile.
Smile.
Operation Smile. And they had a really nice international turnout at that lunch. And the last one I want to mention was the sold-out CBDA for our city manager, and we went well.
Everything was great but the speaker.
Wow.
Thank you all for being there.
Your time's coming.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Yes, what do you put up?
Suddenly saw myself up there. Oh, my goodness.
It was good.
That's it.
Thank you, Louis.
Well, just to set the record straight, and I know the mayor agrees with me, you did a great job.
He really did. He really did. No doubt about it.
But I would like to echo what John said about the tax for the elderly. I think we're moving too fast on that, and we're not going, the commissioner of revenue's not going to have time to get the notices out and so forth, and I would prefer that we not try to rush that, that particular item. It's not that I don't agree with, you know, what's being proposed, but I think we're rushing into it, so.
You know, I think this is one of those things we need to put on the table, you know, planning session, because like, I agree with what you all just said, you know, what came to my mind is phasing it, you know? You know, I didn't even talk to you about it, but I mean, what came to my mind was doing a phase in or something. But I mean, that's something we can put on the table and talk through it and come up with a, build a consensus and move forward on some things. All right? So why don't we do that, Mr. Spoor, the great speaker?
What's that? Phase in?
Yes. No, no, a planning thing, please.
Okay.
Planning workshop. Thank you. Anything else? Someone come in short. All right, let's go to the city council agenda review.
All right, first under ordinance.
Come on, folks.
Ordinances and resolutions. I think we're in shape on this SUL Tranquility Lakes now. And item two, anybody have any problems with item two?
I'm just voting no on D.
All right.
I have an explanation to offer.
Okay.
Item three, the ordinances to accept, appropriate, and transfer the three different funds, A, B, and C. Anybody have any comments on that? Everybody okay?
Just great.
All right. Under planning, there probably are going to be speakers here on Leonard M. Lyon. In any event, I think I want to defer that because I have some questions. I went by and looked at the property, and I have some concerns about it.
Definitely.
March seventeenth.
I beg your pardon?
They want that deferred to March seventeenth.
Who's they?
The owner, the representative, and all.
I think we're going to defer it indefinitely.
I think so, too. Probably has a better move.
It says March tenth.
Yeah. Item two, that's the issue, that that one was the little piece of property that we had the discussion about, and that's, I think everybody understands that now. That should be okay, in my view. Item three, City of Virginia Beach, to amend the comprehensive plan, Prince San and transitionary area.
I'm fine.
And I, and B, amend the transitionary design guidelines. Everybody okay, or what's the story?
No.
You're not.
Well, just the changes that were made, I don't think the public's had an opportunity to weigh in on them. Because there was changes made subsequent to the original meeting, and then there was changes that were added and that we didn't get to see until Friday, so.
Back to what the planning commission had the hearing on.
Well, the write-up says that there were substantive changes. Let's see.
Actually, no, the substantive recommendation was made by the planning commission. And this takes it back to actually what the original documents have always been, to not make any change.
Based on Councilor Mahenley's review, modifications have been made. The planning commission's recommended regard, the substance were recommended visions, and there were...
And I think this is, this is confusing and misleading. This takes it back to where, the way it's always been. I mean, it's always been, this is the way it was in the original documents. There are no changes.
This reverses the substantive change made by the planning commission.
The substantive change, I think, when they changed it.
And now since she's changed it, they recommend it.
This just puts it back to the way it's always been.
It's characterized as substantive, which is...
In the original complaint.
Page thirty?
Page thirty, the revision for February third city council, which is available in adequate for public infrastructure, that part. And then I think that there's a whole separate issue of whether or not that's permissible. And then also, under page twenty-eight, there's another February third revision. So I mean, I just, I think that there's significant, and I've heard from people who want some more time to review it, and I don't think it's unreasonable since these changes were made in between two meetings.
It's just what it goes back to the way it's always been, you know, to take it back to the developable verbiage. And this is something that the committee talked about, because it's very confusing that all properties developable that are really not developable. So I think that section two hundred does need some review, but that needs to be done separate from this issue. So I won't disagree with that. But what the planning commission did was change the word developable, which has always been there, to gross, which means everything, which would include really undevelopable property. And so the committee had, had just kept the original language, you know, the same language that's always been in the document.
Okay, John Mosson, then John Earn.
I'm, I'm never opposed to giving people more time, although I'm always thinking that we do work for the people and these things they have to live with. I don't think we're holding up any development that would be different. I'm assuming that's correct. Is that correct? Someone could say that this isn't impacting anybody's thing under review or... So if we're not losing any window, then there's no harm, no foul for giving people more time to look. And I hope they come forward and take advantage of that time to bring forth substantive stuff, but I'm sure Barbara, it's got to be pretty convincing, but that's what we're here for, is to listen to convincing arguments, and I'm in favor of letting people...
Are there people here to speak on this tonight so we can hear it? I mean, it was on the agenda last time, it's on the agenda tonight. Are there speakers? I mean, we did have stakeholder meetings.
Looks like there's a change is made from the last meeting.
And we had a heck of a good group that worked, you know, and they had a lot of public input to...
They did.
You know, I think...
Looks like there's changes from the last meeting to this meeting. And that's what it's, what it says, revision for the February third city council.
Yeah, it goes back to what the planning commission had before it.
Correct.
It goes back to what was before the planning commission at their meetings.
Was that made by the committee?
Yeah, it goes back to what was, what the planning commission had on its November and its January public hearings.
What did the planning commission vote on?
Changes they made.
They changed the words developable to gross.
Thing we looked at last, we, two weeks back, what we looked at, that's what we had.
Look, there's two bullets, let's say bullet A and bullet B. And bullet B says revision for February third city council. Did the planning commission vote? I mean, bullet A says, planning commission. Bullet B says...
Which page are you looking at?
Page three or four.
Three or four.
And I'm calling them bullet A and B, just to...
I agree.
For the twenty-eighth?
It says page twenty-eight and then page thirty, and at first it says the planning commission, it has a paragraph, and then it says revision for February third city council in a paragraph. So it looks like it's been changed from the last time we looked at, and it's different than what the planning commission recommended.
That, that, well, it's different of what the planning commission recommended because they changed the word, which had already always been there, changed it to gross. And what had always been in the document was develop, the developable acreage.
When we met on the Thursday, February, we had this discussion around the table, and when it says city council, but that really refers as, Barbara came forward what she had planned to do, and then we all asked her, would you please put that in writing?
Right.
So that we could see what it is you're proposing to do, which she did. We read it, and that's what that represents. And so it's what I expected to see, and I wasn't surprised. And, but you're right, it was Friday, but it was what she discussed when she...
It's Friday, and it hasn't been fairly...
Okay, John's turn.
Just, I mean, for some clarity, it's my understanding that the, if we don't change anything, that the wording based on the revision for February third is in the document, that that's in...
That's in the document.
So, in other words, what it is that we see for the February, the revision for February third is what exists in the document today with no changes. So if nothing's passed, that that worded, that verbiage is in the complaint, is that not right? Can you give us some clarity then?
Well, we're confused. There are other changes. I mean, this is the only change of all that that's... Well, we'll just defer it again. I mean, I can see that it's very confusing, but please, let's let people come down, and if there are people who have questions, let's have them come to the public hearing. We had a public hearing on the agenda last week, or the last voting session. We have a public, some for public hearing today. If there are people who have questions, they should be down here asking questions and speaking about it, because unfortunately, you know, the...
Well, I don't know, I haven't heard from a soul on it. And so that's the reason, I said, let's do it.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, this is...
I mean, I haven't heard from a soul. Have you?
No.
Can I just get some qualifications from staff on that?
Please, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no problem. I'm Gerald Phillips, I'm the comprehensive planning coordinator. And just to give you a timeline of what has happened, the committee completed its work in October and forwarded its recommendations for pretty substantial changes to the comprehensive plan that came before the planning commission in November. They deferred action on it indefinitely. And then you requested that it go back to the planning commission. They took it up in January. They held a workshop on it and reviewed it in a lot of detail. They had some suggested changes to that. They considered those at a public hearing then on January the fourteenth and created what we called in a radish sheet to document their changes to both the comprehensive plan policy document and the transitionary design guidelines. And that is what came to you then on January the twentieth, where you took this matter up last week? Was it last week? Two weeks ago, excuse me. And at that time, based on some comments that Mrs. Henley had and some concerns, you requested deferral of it. We worked with her on those changes, and that is what you see before you today. So just for clarification, that the committee's recommendations do reflect pretty substantial changes to today's comprehensive plan, to the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan. And there are very positive changes. They did receive the endorsement from the Tidewater Builders Association, and we did not have any speakers in opposition to them at the planning commission hearing the first time or the second time.
Forbore.
When you say substantial changes, you have all of those underlined, and those are changes as far as design elements. But the committee was very careful not to take away anything that would be considered a taking as far as, you know, how much people would be able to get. But this is what was supported by the TBA and, you know, what had been presented at the public hearings.
Right. So I think there's just confusion, because there has been, there were changes made by the planning commission. They fine-tuned it, if you will, to their satisfaction, and then recommended it forward to you all for approval. And there was in a radish sheet that documented that. And then at your discussion on the twentieth, you requested some additional time to work with that. And so what you see before you is the committee's recommendations as they went to the planning commission, not as the planning commission recommended them to you.
It looks like there's like three changes from the last meeting to today's meeting.
Yes.
So I, I'm really confused, I'm sorry.
It takes it back to what was before the planning commission as...
By the committee.
By the committee. Yes. So they're not changes that I came up with that nobody has seen before. It has to go back to what had been before the planning commission from the committee. And I didn't come up with something that's never seen in the late days.
So why are we changing from the planning commission says to, to these three different changes? I'm...
That's what we were requesting to do.
Yeah, the committee and the planning commission worked together, is the way I remember them.
Well, it was this, this idea, if you, and that's the thing, see, changing the word developable acreage to gross, gross means everything. Developable means property that is given density credit according to what our section two hundred defines as developable. And in all truthfulness, some of that is not really developable, it's floodplain, but that's the way it's always been, been done. And so the committee didn't make any recommendations in changing that. But if you change it to gross and you say that the open space only has to be fifty percent of the gross acreage, then that means it would only have to be fifty percent of all of the acreage, which would include the really, really not developable property, as well as the property that's defined, you know, what, what is kind of out there that, that has been always considered developable in density calculations. And so the, the planning commission really made a change that had not been considered. They, they had not, that, that aspect, that use of the word gross, had not been in any of the proposed documents and so forth that the public had seen before, or that the TBA had seen before, or, you know, had been a part of all the discussion. And so that was the change, and feeling that, you know, to make a change like that, I think it could make some difference in maybe some of the things that are, that are coming along. And that the idea was to leave it the way it's been utilized ever since two thousand and three, when it was adopted, you know, this density calculation and open space calculation on the developable acres as it's, as it's defined in the section two hundred, which does need to be looked at, but needs a broader look.
All right. What's your recommendation to defer to move on?
I would like to go on, and that, a radish sheet, you know, included some typos, which all of them didn't get made, but I won't be so picky that you need a space. a space where you don't have a space, or you need to put ED where you don't have it. But in this...
Teacher.
Right. But, you know, I really think that, that to be consistent with, you know, the, the public and what the TBA saw and what the TBA said they would support and said that we should go back to the language that had been presented before.
Okay. See, one, I want to vote in favor of this. Okay.
Yeah. Well, because I feel like it's a change from, we didn't see till Friday, and I just don't think...
I, I don't think it's accurate.
And, and the planning commission disagreed, and I think that there's a lot of cloudiness here, and I, it troubles me.
Mayor Sessions, right before the meeting started, I spoke to a gentleman, Mr. Russell Harris, who mentioned he would like to speak tonight if it does go forward.
Okay, great. We'll pull it.
So we'll, we'll just pull it then.
All right, got it. Okay, um, that'll do us.